Please rise for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions. To the flag, the United States of America, to the public interest of one nation, under God, and to the invisible, liberal, and just. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, for those who have passed away in our community, especially Tommy Salimba, Katie Esposito, and Dan Teeny. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
President.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Smurl.
Here. Let's start with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A: Overtime Report for All Departments for March 2025 as provided by City Controller received March 26, 2025. 3B: Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report, reviewed March 20, 2025. 3C: Correspondence received from City Business Administration on March 31, 2025 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections as of March 25, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
Taking a look at 3A, all of the city departments are at about 25% for the first quarter of the year, plus or minus, except Parks and Recreation, just to point that one out. And then, and then 3C, when it comes to the payroll preparation tax, it looks like it's outperformed every quarter since its implementation.
Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have an announcement. City was notified, I think today or yesterday, that the city has won the Secretary's Award for Municipal Excellence. And the mayor and some cabinet members, and I know several of us, have been invited to go down to Harrisburg to receive that award on Wednesday, April 16th. So, I think that's a great honor for the city of Scranton. So, congratulations to everyone working in the administration and all of us sitting up here. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
I have a couple. I was asked to announce there is an art show that's going to be coming up from Connor McGoygan, and it's called The Two Connors. And its opening night is going to be Friday, April 4th, at 6 o'clock at Tusk, which they had moved to building. So, their new place now is at 308 Penn Avenue. And his artwork will also be on display for a month, so everyone can enjoy it. And there was one other thing that I wanted to make an announcement for. Yesterday was the International Transgender Day of Visibility, and that's a day that's been celebrated since 2009. And it's an annual event dedicated to celebrating trans people, raising awareness of discrimination faced by trans people, and acknowledging their contributions to society. So, I just wanted to recognize that, that day. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, in addition to tonight's moment of silence, I'd like to offer my personal condolences, thoughts, and prayers to the Salimba family and the West Scranton invader community. Tommy's impact on the youth of this community is immeasurable, and it's a very sad loss on the West Side. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. I just want to start off with a public service announcement. We received a phone call late this afternoon that the county commissioners' meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow at 10:00 is being canceled because of a lack of a quorum. So, anybody planning to go to that meeting, call the county commissioner's office or the government center first, just to make sure. You shouldn't want to be driving downtown looking for parking, just to find out that the meeting's been moved back to April 9th, I believe. Okay, I noticed that our stained glass windows are gone. They've gone for rehabilitation, restoration?
Yeah, probably over a month ago.
Okay.
And in the governor's room also.
Okay, inch by inch, day by day, we're getting there. I too noticed the overtime report. Parks and Rec had used half of its overtime budget. Do we know what is driving the increased overtime in Parks and Rec?
Yes, the cold blue that we have for the shelter.
Okay.
And we've had a colder-than-normal winter, so the shelter has been open.
Okay, that's fine. As long as we know what's driving it, and it's not something that could be corrected, I don't have an issue with it.
No, and we increased the budget from last year.
Yeah. And what you might want to do, you know, when the next budget rolls around, maybe that needs to be, that overtime budget needs to be upped to take account of that kind of situation.
Yep. It was increased this year, Joan.
Yeah, well, it was a strange year, the winter from hell, so to speak. DPW, the negotiation still going on for their collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Okay, because it's now been over three months that they're dealing without a contract. Sooner or later, that thing is either going to be resolved or go to arbitration, so we'll see. And I assume that the 2024 audit is still ongoing?
It's underway, yes.
Making progress? Okay. Now, I have some happy news. It has nothing to do really with city business, but it's a great opportunity for all the residents of Scranton. The Lackawanna County Library System, we have this thing called the American Masters Lecture Series. Last time, it was, I think, the fall of 2023, we brought in Goodwin, a presidential historian, and she was a smash hit. So, on April 30th, 7:00 p.m., at the Cultural Center, and this is free, okay, we're bringing in Rick Steves. I don't know if any of you ever watch PBS and you see his travel show that he does, going to Europe, going to Asia, and everything else. He's been doing this, like, for 40 years, kind of. He is an A-list speaker. He's got the gift of gab-doing, Pat, and I'm sure he's going to have a lot of very interesting tales about touring Europe and touring the Orient and, you know, things he's experienced. And even if you never intend to go overseas or travel or even leave the boundaries of Scranton, like, I'm now permanent resident here, his show is fascinating. And not the least of which is everywhere he goes, he always shows you what the people eat and goes into the local restaurants and everything else. It's just a great show. So, this is free. You can get your, pick up your tickets at any of the Lackawanna County libraries. They're free. Or you can go on Ticketmaster and pick them up that way. But again, it's a chance to do something other than worry about reassessment or stormwater or all the other crappy things that go on in our lives. It'll be a fun evening, and it'll be a good, good thing to do on a Wednesday evening, April 30th, 7:00 p.m. So, if anybody's interested in tickets and would like to pick some up, I do have a few in my purse. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Yeah, Council, Les Spindler, City Resident Homeowner. Here we go again. I'm wondering if the corner I was promised it was going to get fixed, like, three and a half years ago, is going to get fixed this year, because weather's getting nicer now. So, not holding my breath, but I hope we get something done this year. Next thing, several months ago, I brought up a house at 1702 Elizabeth that neighbors told me they think it's an Airbnb, and it's, these neighbors told me, I talked to them the other day, they said it's definitely an Airbnb, and they don't think it's registered. So, I think that should be looked into. Next thing, the garbage I spoke about last week that was left from a homeless camp, and the ramp coming off the expressway, well, most of it was picked up, but there's still some garbage left there. They didn't finish it. So, hopefully they could get the rest of it. Next thing, reassessment. Whoever these jokers were that did this, it was ridiculous. I have a 116-year-old house, bought it 36 years ago for $56,000. It needs work, was reassessed for $194,000. That's ridiculous. I wouldn't get half of that if I tried to sell it today. I don't know who these people were that did the reassessment, but if they came in my house and looked at the work it needs, I know, there's no way I'd get that much. So, I think this reassessment was a joke. Lastly, for years, I heard people coming here and people all over the country complaining about the job that President Joe Biden did. Oh, the economy's terrible, oh my God, we can't afford this and that. Well, just wait and see what's going to happen now with the joker that's in the White House. With his tariffs, we're going to be paying more for everything. Right now, a new car is costing more than $6,000, more than it would have been last year. And this morning on the news, there was an economist from Moody's that said, "We're probably looking at recession in a few months." The guy's in here, not even in there three months, and they're talking about recession already. I said, you know, that's ridiculous. I mean, like I said, people complained about Joe Biden, what's going on now? You ain't seen nothing yet. Wait till you see what's going to happen in the next few months. I mean, by the time he's out of office, people, we wish that Joe Biden was the president again. All right, thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is, you know, I appreciate people's opinions in regards to reassessment, but I don't think the local government really cares what people think. And I just think in this mayoral election and the council election, we need to stop talking about blight and the roads, okay? We need to start really talking about the issues that really should mean something to the residents, okay? The inability to earn a living here, low wage base, no economic development, just an elected political class that really has no really, no real understanding of the people they represent or the things that need to be done to make this city begin to grow again. We really need some independent candidates. We don't really need Democrats or Republicans, because we seem to have a terrible gridlock. I just listened to Les stand here and speak about Joe Biden. Well, he left two million people across the border and gave them social security numbers and let them click social security. He did a host of other things, and you can't really blame Joe Biden, because he never really knew he was president. That's why he kept saying he was a senator, because he had such mental issues that people propped him up to use him with his autopen to sign all kinds of legislation that did hellacious damage to this country. And then, of course, we had a council that went and named things after him, and now doesn't have enough nerve to take those names, to take the name down. And, you know, when we look at our city, we've spent so much time talking about utterly silly things, you know, and developing parks, dog parks. You know, people need jobs. We aren't talking about the real issues. We aren't talking about Moses Taylor Hospital. We aren't talking about regional hospital. We're talking about it in a light where some people want the state of Pennsylvania come forward and give them money to buy these hospitals, but we're not really talking about the issues. You know, we failed to talk about issues here in this community almost my entire life, okay? We haven't talked about when George U. Haas lived on Mulberry Street and he fought the closure of the Scranton State General Hospital and the surgeon who offered to give them land outside the city to build the Veterans Center to save that hospital, and how Governor Casey decided to divest the Commonwealth of all the hospitals that the Commonwealth owned. We've just been misled over almost my entire lifetime, even when you take a look at public education and you see where that is. A third grader in Singapore has the same education as an eighth grader in America. What does that tell you for our country, honestly? We talk about tariffs as if, like, they're a terrible thing, what the president's doing, when all of our manufacturing base has been stripped out of our country, including the pharmaceutical industry, and the tariffs are the only way to bring some of this stuff back. But then we had Joe Biden handing money out to people for absolutely no reason, because the people he was giving it to didn't need it. You know, the pain, the road ahead is going to be very painful, because we've had a lack of leadership in the Congress and Senate for most of my lifetime, just like I've come here for almost 40 years. And I can tell you that the ability of the people that have been elected council members over the course of my time here, some of them have been relatively good, but the bulk of them seem to believe that either they're for the mayor or they're against the mayor, and that's not their job. And nobody's representing the residents. Because if you look around our city, we talk about the homeless camps, well, people should realize that when you know the trade treaties America's negotiated over my lifetime, we've lost our whole manufacturing sector. So, instead of these people going to Scranton Lace or Johnny Fabric or the Manhattan Shirt Factory on Capous Avenue, they don't go anywhere. They go under the bridge, because we're more interested in whether people in Vietnam and China and the Far East have a job or Mexico. And now the Chinese are manufacturing in Mexico, so they can side all the treaties and avoid all the sanctions. We've got, we've raised in this country a very severe problem, illiteracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Coyne Manuka. Starting off as, for another week, with Rubicon. We've talked, I've talked on the fact that without maps, and obviously, since they said if we did not have Rubicon in, we'd have no way of tracking where trash trucks were supposed to go. Do we not have a policy for continuation of business, of restoration in case of an emergency, of hard copies in case something should happen? Because that standalone system is down at DPW. What if that standalone system gets ransomware? What if it gets locked up? Now, I understand that, according to this body here, if they didn't have that mapping for the last, that they've had for the last three years, the 40 years beforehand are irrelevant, and DPW would have no idea how to operate, because they don't remember day-to-day where they drive. They are too substandard to remember what a route is, and obviously, management and the directors cannot cross-train. Obviously, DPW, if they cannot live without Rubicon, this body thinks DPW is incompetent and has no skills unless they're led around by the nose, which is sad to say for them, because they've done a fantastic job, and they've done a fantastic job for long before Rubicon was in this city. All software in this city really should be backed up on a ZFS system. It does snapshots, it protects from ransomware, and you can take the entire data structure and protect it. But then again, it's not in a Microsoft world, and it's actually a more secure way of backing up. So, we don't want to look at that, because it's an intelligent and safe way to protect the systems of the city, like the fifth week of the laptop, of the desktop downstairs in the lobby being completely unsecured and open for viruses. I see the walkability study still has legs, pun intended. It's costing the same as the water projects. It's costing $20 million at this point. So, the water projects over on East Mountain and West Mountain, they cost about the same as the walkability study. And when we were up at the old Central Building, we had a meeting on it, where we were told the blind people can just walk out in front of traffic, because traffic will stop for them on stop signs rather than streetlights that make signals, because they had no idea of that clue. And we're increasing directions from one-way and to one-way streets to traffic in all directions, which will make it even more hazardous to people across, because now they have right and left at every intersection and cutting right and left from them. Once you remove those traffic signs, and once you remove those traffic lights, they can't go back up, because we have to have a certain amount of volume of traffic to be able to put up lights in Center City. And it was talked about there at the meeting at Central, that once they are put down, they'll never go back up, because we don't have the traffic to put them in per state regulations. So, it's a one-way street. You've got a stop sign, and that's it. But $20 million is fantastic to put into Center City when $20 million is all you're putting into flooding for neighborhoods over 20 or 30 years. Last week, we had a complaint about people speaking politics from the podium. Guess what? When they're not elected, they are citizens and can talk about whatever the hell they want to. This podium here is for public speaking, and if they think that they have things they need to bring forward, they should. At the same time, Dr. Rothschild and Mr. King both castigated people for coming up here and doing that. Mr. King then afterwards went into a, had, went into a conversation on the mayor's lovely plan for the city that none of the public was actually invited to, because it was, the state of the city was a behind locked doors. It's amazing that you could sit here and do a political speech for the mayor on everything that she has done from that and tell the public they can't speak on issues relating to them. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Virgil Argenta, Scranton. My condolences to the family of Tommy Salimba. Week after week during public comments, questions are asked by citizens. The Fifth Order usually addresses these questions, although it rarely does. Last week's Fifth Order was unusual and a bit bizarre, to say the least. It sounded like a political statement, perhaps for incumbents who all need to be replaced. After a few disparaging remarks, the councilmen discussed what they described as accomplishments. We pay taxes for amenities like pools, pickleball and tennis courts, street paving, new police officers, quality-of-life tickets to be issued, blight property demolished, and good credit ratings, applying for grants and neighborhood improvements. We pay for all that. This administration played no role in our 30-year distress status, except perhaps maybe signing some papers. You had nothing to do with that. Your speech overlooked several important issues in Scranton, such as homelessness, rampant crime, gang activity. The police, fire, DPW, clerical union, health care are in disarray. We have unsettled contracts and threats to the DPW recyclable department. Remember the bins of files outside? The Fire Department's Pension Board has had a vacancy for three years, almost as long as you've all been elected, three years. Police testing now includes six tests given, taken by hundreds of applicants. Forty officers need it in the department. However, only five new officers were hired. Would it surprise you that one of them was the chief's son? You mentioned street paving, but only select streets, including those of city officials, were paved. Mr. King, your street was paved, the mayor's street was paved, a few alleys were paved. Good job, Mr. King. Kaiser Valley flood victims are still waiting for answers, and those that took advantage of the 5,000, guess what they got in their mail? 1099s. Proud of that? No wonder why you're not running. What about Rubicon, a disaster telling local DPW workers where Scranton streets are, costing taxpayers millions and millions of dollars, plus a multi-year contract? Good job. Let's not forget about Mufahan. Remember the gang experts that came here? Remember we paid a quarter of a million dollars for two years for them to tell us United States veterans are the potential terrorists? Not one of you guys stood up to them. Shameful. No wonder why you're not running. Millions are wasted on studies that could have saved millions being done in-house. The NAR pool destruction of slides and pools, the lab pool, was another deception, with claims of no funds. That claim was false. You were one of the biggest cheerleaders. Millions were wasted on studies that could have been saved, could have been done in-house. You had Mr. Poetis in here speaking, bringing attention to grants that were expiring for much-needed bridge repairs, only to tell him his time was up. Remember that, Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Okay. Splash pads versus pools and multiple bid rounds on other projects is another issue that we'll wait for. The lockdown of City Hall, the petition for removal of Biden's street signs, they only want it returned to its rightfully named Spru Street with the petition with over 30,000 signatures. Meanwhile, citizens, senior citizens, veterans, and residents face huge tax hikes and a looming 50-year reassessment barreling down after that. Rising utility bills and millions of dollars in lawsuits, Mr. King, in the school district and in city council. And if you need some names on who those lawsuits are, let me know. Absurd dollar amounts of raises given out to City Hall employees, and Scranton City Council voted themselves raises. Disgusting. This speaks volumes about your priorities. And another notable point is the lack of commentary on a possible ethics violation involving a council candidate, their employer in the city of Scranton using federal and state funding. While you're endorsing that candidate, silence might be preferred, because that's your candidate of choice, remember, to take your seat? Well, I hope you educate him on how not what to do. You're a lame dunk, Mr. King. You shouldn't be voting on anything at all to deal with the city. You're done.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta.
Good evening, Council. Lynn Labraski, homeowner, business owner. I did want to also extend my condolences to Mr. Salimba's family, and he will be greatly missed in the community. I did want to thank Council for getting Parks and Rec to clean up South Third Street. They didn't quite do the whole street, but they, they did clean it up, so that was appreciated. And then, speaking of the West Scranton Little League, I did speak to one of the board members, and I just wanted to put it out there that maybe the city could help pay for an additional defibrillator. So, each field, the West Side behind Burger King and then Sloan also, they're in need of an additional one. They each have one, but if there were an emergency with a child, then they'd have to go probably a good half- go probably a good half mile to the other side of the field to get that defibrillator. So I know they're looking to see if the school board could pay for one, and then I was thinking maybe, I don't know if there's any ARPA funds or anything like that that could possibly fund a purchase of a second one. And so that being said, they were doing a lot of cleanups and improvements back there. I do believe they have some homeless issues right by that field. They did have some issues, though, with DPW picking up some of the stuff. I think they finally did. And then there's another volunteer that's going to go down there tomorrow because they have trees that are, like, falling, and it's, it needs a lot of work. So I just wish that the city could step up and help the Little League fields. We don't want gang activity. We want our kids engaged. We want them playing and doing things that are, you know, going to keep them out of trouble. So I don't see why the city can't pitch in and help with keeping the fields, you know, in good condition. And then also, I wanted to myself speak on politics at the podium. So I was a little taken back last week by the whole entire end of the meeting because I know a lot of people do get up here and they speak about politics or whatever their intentions are, and maybe I don't like what some people say or how they say it, but that's up to you guys as a council to keep the decorum. But I believe residents in Scranton do have a right to get up here at the podium and speak whatever they feel and speak about city issues. I think it should be kept to city issues. And if somebody feels that city leaders or administration are not doing their job and they feel they could do a better job, then they have every right to get up here and, you know, say that. But again, at the same time, I did hear one of the council members basically give a stump speech for the mayor, the incumbent mayor that's running again for reelection, and that really, really bothered me. That felt to me very hypocritical. So, you know, if you're going to tell someone not to stand here and talk about politics, then you shouldn't sit behind that desk, any of you, and really, you know, I'm sorry, endorse any candidate. I happened to be at the State of the City speech because I happen to be a chamber member, and I was invited through the chamber, so I was there. I don't know why it wasn't televised. Has it been televised since then? No? Because I saw ECTV was there that day, but no. So I don't know what we're hiding, but I know the auditorium wasn't full, that's for sure. So yeah, I mean, that's how I feel. I mean, I'm running for mayor as a Republican candidate this year, and if I want to get up here and tell the public that, then I don't see anything wrong with that, you know? It doesn't mean you're campaigning from the podium. It means you're speaking your intentions. But group of volunteers yet again spent all day Saturday cleaning up the Heritage Trail. They filled another 40-yard dumpster. I don't know when we're going to find a solution to the problems. The homeless problem's growing. I know they're staying at the train station again. It's not just the Heritage Trail. It's really, it's taken over the city. So I know there is an unsheltered task force. If the public could, if you guys could push for the public to be invited to those meetings, I think that would be helpful. And the same with the gang prevention, you know, force or whatever you have. I don't see why everybody cannot have a seat at the table when it comes to these issues because there's a lot of smart people in Scranton with really good ideas. If everybody could come together and work together, we could get some of these things resolved. So that's all I have for tonight. I appreciate your time.
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I stand before these five chairs with a suit on, out of respect, trying to look almost as good as Mr. Waldenberg. Think I did pretty well. Didn't receive that same respect last Tuesday evening, Dr. Rothschild. You managed to put four-syllable word into my mouth. You could have asked for clarification before I walked away. My mother never raised a fool. I was raised by a single mother, Mr. King, you knew her very well, who worked two, sometimes three, jobs just to get by. Her reckless aggression towards me insulted that upbringing that gets me by on a daily basis. I have been tested more in life than most. Her strength without ever giving up has resonated into my life. She's made me stronger than I ever could have known. You insulted her. You insulted me. You insulted those who have elected you. You insulted that chair and the good people of Scranton. You've insulted amazing women who have sat in that chair before you, like Judy Gattelli, Janet Evans, Mary Kay Holmes, to name a few. I'm respectfully requesting your resignation. You want to hear? All you wanted to do was hear something you didn't. I brought up many things, like Leach Eight Lines, and all I got from you was crickets. Do not like the direction which your city is going. The good people of Scranton deserve better. Mr. King, you mentioned after your infomercial that our current mayor, for our current mayor, that you're not happy with the fact that I've spoken about a campaign to give the city back to its people. What you neglected to mention is that the rules have changed. Apparently, over the years, so have you. You remember George Capwell? Forty-one years, he drove a garbage truck in the city of Scranton without Rubicon. Yet, you have rubber-stamped everything handed down by this expansion team. Why? Your street was paved last year. There are hundreds of other blocks that need resurfacing, more so than your road. That makes me wonder what streets are going to be paved in an election year. The garbage truck drivers know what roads need to be paved. Yours was not one of them, Mr. Smurl. Lee Morgan brought in six months ago a bottle of water from his tap that no one ever would have even given to their pet, but yet you said nothing. You were no Obamagoff. Good luck with your future projects. As a true independent, I call a spade a spade. I call a heart a heart. I witnessed how Mr. McAndrew and Mr. Schuster can always seem frustrated, asking the right questions and just getting delayed, half answers or no answers at all. I mentioned crickets in the past. Let me make one thing perfectly clear. The comments were not directed towards the two of you. The comments were directed towards the three rubber stamps. Thank you both of you for respecting those chairs and caring about the good people of Scranton. For the most part, we have a great slate of city council candidates. I am confident that we will fix this situation. I don't like the direction which our city is going. The good people of Scranton deserve better. Last week, I mentioned Leach Eight Lines. Where are they? The city never received host fees for them. Ask Gene Barrett where the lines are. He was the former sewer director for the Sewer Authority. He knows. Guess who's funding his campaign? I could care less what your name is. I promise to always do the right thing. We will find those lines. I know how to collect money. I'll go back and backdate and get those host fees. Quit voting for those with different last names with the same mediocre results, like a rainbow in the dark. It's time to give your city back to the people. These police calls have been very alarming. We need change. Morale's at an all-time low. I found our next police chief and public safety director. We will remove politics from our finest. Once he speaks to those that he selects to round out his department, we'll announce them as a group so they won't be targeted like I was last week. It's important to know exactly what you vote for and when any team is needed. And so was a good voice for the people of Scranton. I will be honored to be that voice and will not let anybody down. God bless our first responders. God bless Tommy Solenda, Solumba. Good evening, Council.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Rick Little, Scranton property owner and taxpayer. This is part of my property, 598, and I did pay tax on it from Staples. This, a couple of weeks, I usually speak off the top of my head saying that, and I said about maybe a couple of weeks ago, that everything's unconstitutional. And, I mean, it sounds like a crazy statement. Everybody's always shooting that word around, you know, my rights, my Constitution. But it seems to me that the problem with the Constitution is directly involved with the judicial branch of government. Now, last week when I came here, I found this article in the paper, this one about police homeless man attacks hospital staff. Who knew he was homeless? Who decided he was homeless? Where's the record of that? I mean, I'm a filmmaker. That's what I do. I look into the facts, you know? Maybe it's a good story. This is a story, and the reporter actually cited that according to police, he's homeless, Corey McNulty, 31. So I set out to find out what happened to this guy. Because I had this, I'm homeless, and about 25 days in of homelessness, I could not take it anymore, and I was too cold, needed to go to the hospital, and, you know, I didn't know what I was doing, but I could have been in the same place as this guy. They could have locked me up. They have a law called a 302 and a 1551. That's a mandatory psyche evaluation. Now, according to the article, he just goes into the hospital at 10:00 a.m., and then he's arrested, I think, at 4:27 a.m. The psyche evaluation is supposed to take 45 minutes. I don't know if he was there voluntary or involuntary, but at some point, according to the article, one of the security guards at the hospital restrained him. A bunch of people restrained him, and it sounds like they tied him up, you know? But this is your liberty. Before they take your liberty anyplace, you have constitutional rights, and this is part of the constitutional rights. I tried to visit the guy in jail. What a rigmarole going through that. Everybody pushed back from the sheriffs, from the jail, from the criminal court. I sat in on the criminal court. You can't even witness what's happening over there at the criminal court. You can sit there if you, once you get in, you know? But, you know, some lawyer called in the thing, and the only reason he's languishing in jail is because this thing happened on the 15th, on a complaint by a Scranton police And the rest of it is hearsay, all the people at the hospital, but supposedly, he was restrained, and he's spitting at people, he's fighting mad, and now he's facing felony charges. He's put on $50,000 bail, and none of this is adding up to me. And so he was supposed to have a preliminary hearing, I believe, on the 17th, and he didn't have it. And so I'm asking, why didn't he have it, you know? And the only reason is the arresting police officer didn't show up. They call him the affiant. He didn't show up, so the guy remains in jail. And I don't know this guy. I mean, he's 31 years old, he seems Irish, McNulty, but this can't keep happening. This is this sort of, you can't take a person's liberty away and then just move it along because everybody's making money. The hospital makes money on a 15, 5150 or 302. I don't know which one of it is, but those are the medical things where they think you're a danger to yourself. But, you know, he's in jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer, as of last week. We're talking about the roads constantly. On the 600 of Crown Avenue, it was recently paved. They stole away with my curb, the old slate curb, and there's a dig already, and big divot at the end of the block when you're closing in on the intersection. And on the 800 of Hickory, that is a prime example, another dig, a prime example of how they do not seal the ends of the cut. They cut down with a stone saw, and the grooves are left there for the water to get into. I suggest an inspection after the dig and make them come back and fix it. Don't raise my taxes for, to fix the roads because typically, a lot of times, we're not the ones ruining them. And it's pretty, pretty sickening to see that, a recently paved road, street. And once again, we need a tax-exempt study and go to the state and try and establish some kind of limit. We're at 40%, and I contend that's too high. Somewhere else might have the little church in the valley by the Wild Woods and the fire Okay. Mount Airy, there was an article in the paper, a bunch of people are suing. Now, you know, no two friends part faster than a fool and their money. But they were taking the tips off of the dealers and stuff and paying floor bosses. It's improper. And basically stiffing people in the wages they were paying for dealing cards at 11:30 on a Saturday night. I wanted to regurgitate. So, okay, let's get to the other stuff going on. We have Health and Human Services, Robert Kennedy, and he's suggesting cod liver oil and vitamin A to fight measles instead of a vaccination. Only 1% of the kids in the U.S. are vitamin A deficient, and it can cause seizures, coma, and liver damage, and it more or less manifests itself like a case of hepatitis. Yellow eyes and, I mean, what a retard that guy is. And he's had every education. I wouldn't ever call somebody like that that was actually mentally challenged, but he is a retard. And...
Mr. Dobson, there's no need for that. There's no need to use inappropriate language like that.
Yeah, okay. I apologize, but it's very frustrating when somebody has all kinds of access to an education and a good life, and they run around and start trouble like this. Now, a number of firms have been blackballed, law firms in Washington, and, you know, it's really ridiculous. They're actually extorting free labor. Trump, Musk offered $2 million for votes. That's a felony in Wisconsin. F-35 customers, because of all of this, are afraid of being cut off in a military crisis from supply, so they're not going to buy F-35s. Three to five trillion dollars have been lost in the stock markets over three or four weeks. Trevor Milton pardoned in security fraud. One-half billion restitution for cyber whatever, cyber coins or, if you can call them that. Inflation's up 2.4%. And I'll stop there, but...
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
Don't expect my sympathy if you had the good life...
Thank you. Anyone else?
...want to run around ruining everyone else. Want to run around ruining everything else.
Marie Schumacher. I wasn't going to come up, but after sitting there from this time, I'd like to know if you have one thing or the top three things that this city needs. And so I would like to ask each of you to tell me what you think the number one thing for this city to continue and do the things they're supposed to do for the residents.
All right. Well, Marie, this is, this is your time to speak, so in fifth order. Then if anybody wants to address that, they are welcome to. But this right now is your time.
I'm giving it to you. It's a gift.
Well, we will do our part in fifth order, as we normally do.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I understand.
Anyone else?
Bailey Simmer. So I just want to follow up on my concerns from last week. I see that the solicitor's not here again. None of my business where he is. Do we know when he'll be back or if?
He'll be here next week.
Cool. Yeah, so just to reiterate, just kind of looking to get some sort of opinion or explanation or really any cohesive thought from the city's law department or council on the city continuing to use and pay for Rubicon for a three-month period before council approved it. So trying to figure that out, not going to let up on it. I'll leave all the other issues aside for now. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that's it.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. We just found out tonight that the PUC hearing that was scheduled for April 9th, it was supposed to be at Lackawanna College at 6:00 p.m., that the PUC canceled that and now moved it to 1:00 p.m. Well, actually, it was actually at 1:00 p.m. on April 9th in Wilkes-Barre. They were supposed to come up here and do it at 6:00 p.m. at Lackawanna College, but for some reason, it was canceled. As I said, just found that out at caucus tonight. I know there was talk about possibly having it in here, but at 6 o'clock next April 9th that evening is a zoning hearing meeting. And I know they have a long agenda. They're actually going to be addressing some Airbnb issues that evening. Plus, the sense was, based on the past PUC hearing we had at the Cultural Center, we this chamber wouldn't have been able to handle the number of people that would be here. So a little disappointed in that. I don't know if there's anything we can attempt to do to try to get them to reconsider moving it back up here somewhere, but that's something that needs to happen. As far as last week, me highlighting some of the state of the city, things that were brought out at the State of the City that was held last week. I never sit here and say that our city is perfect. It's far from it. I acknowledge, we have a lot of work to do. No two ways about it. There's lots of things that need to be addressed. For instance, we need to, I wish we could do, we have a paving list for this year. I wish we could do more paving than we are. I will say this, the streets that are being addressed with the stormwater, they're not listed on the paving list, but I spoke to Tom Riley, our engineer. Because those roads are being ripped up for the stormwater remediation projects on East Mountain and Kaiser Valley, they're actually going to be paved in conjunction with the stormwater project. So I think that's a good thing. So that'll add to the list of streets that are already on the list of streets that need to be paved. Back to Marie's, I think that homelessness is something we could do a better job on and that we need to work on and to address. And the gang issues, we need to work on trying to improve that issue. For the longest time, there was denial that there were gangs in the city, and, you know, I think we all well know that there are, and that's something that needs to be addressed. As far as me being a lame duck, well, I'm on this council. I was elected to a four-year term. I'm here. I will vote on anything that comes before me, and I'm an elected official until December when I leave. I chose to leave on my own. I decided not to run, but I see nothing wrong. I have to sit here and listen to criticism every week. That's fine. That's part of my job as a councilperson, to sit here and listen to criticism. But I find nothing wrong, nothing wrong whatsoever for me to come up and talk about some of the accomplishments that we've achieved over the last three and a half years. I know rarely, if ever, are we going to hear any of that from the podium, so I think it's important that at least the citizens hear a little bit about some of the positive things that have occurred over the last few years. And quite frankly, I'm very proud to have been a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. From some of the questions in the previous weeks, I did ask about the HUP test, getting an update on the HUP test. And at this point in time, they said, the city administration said, "To date, the county has not mailed the letter requesting information from those tax-exempt properties." So at this point in time, Mr. Volenberg, after we receive that answer, can we ask what's, what are the city's next actions to be taken and what the company that we hired, what is the city administration and that company's next action is going to be in regards to the HUP test?
We will, sir. We're reaching out to the commissioners tomorrow.
Thank you. Regarding Meadowbrook, a few weeks, I've asked the same questions. On February 27th, there was a meeting with the homeowners. The homeowners were happy with the meeting, with the, with the engineers, but they were waiting on some of the updates that were made. Over the last three weeks, I've continued to ask for those updates. The answer that I got was the city cannot share those updates currently because the Pennsylvania Department of General Services is waiting, they're waiting on approval from them. So once that's approved from them, they can release that to the homeowner. So at this time, we're just waiting for that approval. I'm happy to say we did, council did receive a letter today letting us know that the retired fire, the fireman, Mr. Morgan, will be seated to the pension board. So that is, that has been, been done, and that individual will be seated. When it comes, just some of the things right off the top of my head, Marie, when it comes to the city, I always think finance. Since the days when I was on the school board, I always thought finance is, is the top thing on the list. The city was in Act 47, the school district was going into recovery, we're seeing what's going on with the county now, and I think always, we need to stay on top of our finances to keep the city financially healthy and do our part. Right now, blight, I know you see lots of complaints. We see lots of complaints come in, and this council fields lots of complaints from the city, and we get it out to, to our code enforcement, and I think it's something we have to stay on them about, and we have to improve. Currently, we're looking at zoning. Some ordinance was passed in 2023, but as the zoning board is going through that, we're seeing some gray areas, and I think that definitely needs to be updated since it's been into effect. Also, as Mr. King said, crime. Right now, the DA's office, we're seeing a lot of coordination with them. We're seeing some groups that are selling drugs being taken out, and we're seeing that coordination. That coordination has to continue to happen to fight crime in our city. So that, off the top of my head, those are some of the, the issues I see. And with that being said, I spoke in caucus tonight about, once Mr. Go-Bride gets back, about getting on some of the subjects we spoke about with the zoning board. We did meet with the zoning board to see some of the problem areas that they're, that are arising as they're going through some cases. And once he gets back, I'd like to continue on that process and, and improve as we go. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Let's see. First off, we had received contact from someone, and they had sent it to 311 as well, and it's regarding some branches that are behind on 600 Stip Court in that location. So if we could request if CPW is able to pick up those branches, just want to make sure they've received it.
It's been reported.
Excellent. Thank you. And then we, I've received some responses from some of my questions from last week. First off, I had asked regarding the Sorrento Center, there was a letter that we received from a resident who lives nearby about it, and the response we received was that too, the city administration has reviewed the letter and will meet with relevant city departments to see what can be done to address residents' concerns. So hoping that there will be some corrections made there, that it'll be able to be cleaned up for this resident. So I'll stay in communication with them to make sure that's, that's happening. And another response I've received, I had asked about, I don't know, city hall's open door policy and if city council had, had like the power to, to be able to change that or who that fell under. And I know our usual solicitor isn't, isn't with us. I'd probably have him answer as well, but the administration had responded that the administration, by and through the mayor's executive authority vested in the city's Home Rule Charter, determines the appropriate levels of access to specified areas of city infrastructure to ensure safety, confidentiality of sensitive materials, i.e. evidence obtained by law enforcement and personnel records, and operational efficiency. So that's the response I had received from them. Last week, I was able to attend a celebration at the Nancy K. Holmes Library, and we're disappointed we didn't see Ms. Hoda on it's there. We expected to see her, but a lot of other great people who attended to celebrate some of the changes and renovations that they've made there and largely it being more accessible now to those who might be using wheelchairs or strollers. I actually bought my son with the, with the stroller to try out the new ramp, and it worked great, and the doors were automatic, and there were quite a few people there that do use wheelchairs, and so I'm proud to see that library becoming accessible. And one of the, one of the people that we had spoken with had brought up a concern about the pool renovations, and we talked about it a little bit in caucus, but he wanted to make sure that there would be, you know, some way that people could get into the water who do use wheelchairs because like his usual wheelchair, a power wheelchair, you wouldn't be able to bring in. It would be, it would be damaged. So there used to be the availability of lifts to bring people in and out. So I think we still might have that equipment, so I wanted to see if we explore that. Or I believe Councilman Swann was also, we were provided with some other information on like Aqua wheelchairs that could be used so that people could enter the water. The, like the Palatine Ag is going to be a zero-entry pool, so that would be something that would potentially work well there. So just wanted to make mention of that. And I know Ms. Schumacher had asked about some of our, our top concerns, and Councilman Schuster had brought up like all the three that I had written down too. So definitely our, our city's financial stability is very important to me and high priority, as well as crime and, and public safety. And then blight has always been very high on, on my list since I've been on council as well. You're welcome. And, oh, and I just wanted to respond to some comments that were directed towards me in, in public comment. So I'm not planning on resigning from my position as a, as a council member. Not sure why I would. Last week, I did state that I wasn't, I wasn't fully sure if that was what I had heard from Mr. Mancini, and I, you know, appreciate that you clarified your remarks with me. I, you know, I still don't think that singling out any group of people and calling them sexual predators is something that I agree with. I do agree that we should continue addressing as a city, sexual predators in the city, and I appreciate the Scranton Police in, in doing that for us. So I understand, you know, why that would be a concern, but just don't think we need to single out community, whether it's the LGBTQ community or the homeless community as he clarified that he had meant to, to say. So I also do stand by what I said regarding politics within this room. I do appreciate what people have to bring to the table and, you know, we're meant to discuss your problems within the city. I mean, there's also a lot of positive things happening with the city, but I, I want people to come here and tell us what we need to work on and what we need to fix or correct. But I think that there's a, there's a gray line when it, when it can also cross over into more of a campaign discussion as opposed to just bringing issues regarding the city to us. And there was one other thing that I just wanted to mention, since I had brought that up last week and just wanted to discourage it. It's not to say that you can't say whatever you would like at the podium. You certainly can. There was one other thing brought up tonight, you know, some language that was used, and really appreciate if people would use respectful language in here that is within our, within our council rules and what we ask of you. I think it's, it's really offensive to use that terminology, especially people who are intellectually disabled, I think would be greatly offended by that, or those with loved ones who have intellectual disabilities. So I want to make sure to point that out. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandless, do you have any motions or comments?
I got a few. So I also have a problem with the R-word. Come on. I'm a big proponent of freedom of speech. I speak my mind. I never have a problem doing it. But I'm an educator, and I'm surrounded by all types of kids and their, their levels of learning, and that's a word that's not tolerated anywhere. We can, you can call whatever you want. That's, that word, I just have a huge problem with, and I hope it doesn't happen here again. Okay, next, so for Mr. Spindler, how about we take a look, another look at 1704 Elizabeth Street? Okay? You know, is it an Airbnb? Has code enforcement been there? Had they issued either a notice or citation at this property? And if so, also contact in tandem zoning. See if they, they appeared or petitioned at a meeting for a special exception. Maybe we can, you know, get some final closure on this property and what, what the activity really is.
I will, and I'll report back.
Thank you. Let's see. I also was shocked when I heard from the PUC canceling their meeting. You know, you, you really disappointed and, and did a number on the residents with, with the, with the proposed rate hike, and then you cancel the meeting here. And supposedly, if all of you or any of us want to go, it's going to be during the day, Wilkes-Barre, Williamsport. I, I just think that's a, that wasn't a good move. You're not making friends doing that. All right? And so I agree with my two colleagues here, issues. What are the three, there's more than three. All right? The three biggest, I agree, we have to be financially sound, right? Keep taxes at bay, public safety, we need, we need to work, work on that because of the current climate. And also, you know, blight's an issue. It's always going to be an issue. But I have personal ones, Marie. I feel we, my personal needs are, I think, that are priorities for me, or I'd like to see done better here in city hall, is better communication. And when I mean better communication, I mean timely responses to our inquiries that we bring forth for you in this room. All right? They're not timely. All right? So I think, I think we need, I'd like to see that improved. I'd also like to see more transparency. Everybody in this building claims, and, and it's one of their top priorities, but unfortunately, I hear stuff on the street or on social media or in the paper before I hear it formally from, from here. So I have a problem with that. And I also think that this, you know, this building or the, the people within it and the administration needs to pay better attention to the needs and interests of all of you. And I'm only just circling around with better communication. And I know you guys come, and we, we forward a lot of concerns, issues, we inquire on your behalf, not just all of you sitting in the room. We do it 24/7. You would not believe- You would not believe the amount of emails, and that comes with the job, and I love it and I try to answer everyone in a timely fashion, I'm asking for it here, so I try to do it myself instead, you know, the behavior I seek from here. But, it's something that we do. And I know it's frustrating, it's frustrating to us, it's frustrating to you and we don't have the answers, but there's only so much we can do. We're not here day-to-day, we're not day-to-day operations people, but just to sum it up, there are the three things I'd like to see in addition to the obvious ones that we need to do better with. Also, we talked a little bit in caucus about the pools, right? That's been a hot topic since I'm here, I'm here, Jesus, five, six years. And I'm a little confused because I've been seeing some, you know, addresses from the mayor, I'm seeing some, you know, some information on the website, on Facebook. I want to know every pool that we're working on, the depth from end to end. I don't want to be surprised a year or two from now that every pool's three feet. I'm just afraid of that, I'm not accusing anything, but I just, for clarity's sake, I want to know the depth of every pool that's being worked on in this city or every project that we're working on over the next two years, all right? Also, we had an issue, there was an issue, a resident came to me about a lot next door to Willard School, right? A blight, the property has a lot of blight, overgrowth, and we did reach out through you and myself that we got, they cleaned it up a little bit, but the neighbor said, you know, they never came back. So, could we have cone of first one, just circle around, because guess what, you know, my grass is starting to grow in my backyard, so this is leftover stuff, I'm sure that it's going to get worse over there if we don't circle back and take a peek at that. And I think that's, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry. I will start out with, last week, Mr. Rodriguez was here and he had some concerns about his taxes and he had met with Adam Joyce, our treasurer, but there is something that needs to be addressed. The problem with it is when a person pays a delinquent taxes at a property at the single tax office, they're not being informed that they still owe for trash fees. Now, delinquent trash fees are sent to Portnoy for collection, so that's really a different agency. So, I'm hoping we can either get together with the single tax office and perhaps put up a notice or at least let people know if their trash is delinquent, it is sent somewhere else for collection and maybe this will help them from getting a large accumulation of fees. So, Mr. Volenberg, if you will send that to the single tax office and ask if there's some way they can put up a note or something, if they know people, their tax for their garbage fee is delinquent, would they tell them at that point so that they know it has been sent to a different office?
I will, Mr. Swann.
Thank you. The second thing is ARPA on our website, I've been asked about not being able to get to any of the ARPA information. So, I did go onto Scranton's website, scranton.gov, and I typed ARPA, A-R-P-A, in the top-right search column of the city's website. I got, as soon as I typed that in and I typed in ARPA, I got nine pages of every single transaction that's done with the ARPA money, every single dollar spent, and that has come through council also. So, Mr. Argent, I know you've been looking for this, so this is available there. Thank you. The other thing, for Neighbor Works, they, I guess you can call it a loan, but the money that Neighbor Works has from ours, from us, is one of the loans, if you call it that, is actually renovation of 635 Brook Street, and that building should be created, or I'm sorry, completed by April, and then the money will turn back to the city if that is sold. And there is another one for $200,000, that also is with Neighbor Works, it's for the homebuyer project, and if you look that up, that's project number 60021501.100.0000. So, that's where there's, so it's actually like 200 and some, or I'm sorry, 300 and some thousand dollars that's out, but that, it's kind of reoccurring. The financial disclosures from people on boards from the city, I did ask for those and I received them, but they, we still seem to have a pile of people that are still listed on boards, but they are not. So, I had asked Mr. Volenberg to send it to the Law Department because it is their job to provide us with all of those forms, and if somebody doesn't have it, that's their job to get it. So, hopefully we'll have that, an updated one this coming week with all of these other people deleted off of there so we could have a current one. The other thing, the USB port on the computer, in the foyer coming in, I spoke with the IT department and they said before that was put out in service, out in use, that the IT department secured it, so you cannot get anything out of there. The price for the holiday lights, the removal of the lights, this is the contract and this is also online, so if you need to see it, it is there. It is, it gives you a list of what the company did, the price for removal of city lights from the storage unit, inspect, repair, replace bulbs, brackets, install lights, remove the decorations, all the electrical extension cords, all of repair broken wiring, and the total of that is $87,484. This company was the lowest responsible bidder, that did come through council, and the award of the contract did not come through council, but it doesn't have to, to be honest with you, they can make that choice without us. So, that was paid, there was one payment was out in December and I think it was for about $57,000, do you remember, approximately $57,000?
$54,000.
I'm sorry, $54,000. No payment since then, so that's where that is right now. The financial update meeting, I attend monthly, this one I attended, we went over the current cash position of the city, revenues, and the audit, which is underway, workers' comp funding account, removal of insurance policies, and our debt service. We also spoke about the hub test, which comes up a lot. And the thing with the hub test is, and I believe the letters to be sent out have been prepared, I believe somewhere in October of last year, so I had asked Mr. Volenberg to send a letter to Mr. Tobin and to the county commissioners. I don't know if they're aware that they have not been sent out there, I don't know if it was a mistake or if, I hope we have the money to send them out because that is, that's holding up the entire process of the company that we hired and that the city is paying for. On the financial update, the thing that stuck out the most was the DPW, or I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec overtime, but that, like before, we explained was because of the code blues that we had an extensively cold winter this year, so that's why we had all of that overtime. We did increase that in the budget last year, but this year was, it was just very different and it was cold a lot more than normal, so I don't know if adding more money next year is the right answer, maybe leave it alone and hopefully the weather will balance out, but I don't know that answer, so that will be for, that would be for the administration to decide. The other thing, there was a complaint about South Main Avenue and Rundle Street. It was a bunch of illegally parked cars and I believe Scranton, yeah, this is, the Scranton Highway Unit went out and they coordinated a response with city code enforcement and also with Taylor Police Department, Taylor Code Enforcement. Scranton PD tagged six cars parked illegally on the roadway, Scranton also seized six improper registration license plates, code enforcement officers cited eight, and Taylor PD also addressed approximately 15 vehicles that were in violation of South Main Avenue and Taylor. So, that was taken care of. I was also, I was able to attend a meeting with the mayor yesterday and Eileen Cipriani, PennDOT Secretary was here and they were speaking about implementing the walkability study and the connectivity plan and also about all of the bridges in the city of Scranton and what we have to go through to get these done. It's a long process and there's still a ton of work that has to be done. Lackawanna Avenue also came up, so I believe we were looking at that, and the, did try to separate the top of Lackawanna Avenue, that is separated in the plan, so hopefully that will be released before we have to do the entire project of Lackawanna Avenue. We also had a vacant property review committee meeting yesterday afternoon. It was basically like a work section, we discussed what properties we wanted to do and what our plans were doing with demolition and all the blight in the city. So, the first meeting, because it will be, the attorneys will be finished with all of that, the first meeting will be June 30th at 3:00 PM. It will be open to the public, so everyone's invited to come with any of your suggestions of blighted properties, and there are many of them, and believe me, we have lists and lists and lists, so they're not all going to be done this year, there's just way too many things to take care of, but that has begun, that process has begun. And another thing I went over this week was another truck stuck under Luzern Street Bridge. So, it's evident the signage just simply doesn't work. I looked at other municipalities and what they do with low bridge problems. So, what I found is, this is just one company and it's called an overheight warning system, and that seems to be the most effective. It works on either 110 volt or it works on solar panels. What it does is it sends a beam across, like if you have a garage, if you walk through the garage and your garage door is coming down, you break that beam, it sends a signal out. So, what this does, if the truck is too high, it breaks the beam and then you could have it actually go to light it signs before you get to the underpass, or you could have it go to anything really, but something to warn them to stop them from doing that. I do have this pamphlet, Mr. Volenberg, if you will forward this, I don't know if this would go to administration or the police department, whoever would maybe look into this. I don't know if they're aware of this type of thing, but it is available and hopefully we can do something with these because signage really isn't working.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. And two other things, one is the phone system. If our City Hall, we've had our phone system updated in the past couple months, and one of the main concerns was people saying they call and they don't get anybody, or nobody calls them back. So, in this phone system now, what happens if you call a department and you happen to leave an email or a message on the phone, our phone system now turns that into an email and it goes to that person, whoever you sent it to. It is recorded, the day and the time and who it was sent to. If you happen to call and just hang up and not leave a message, your phone number is recorded, so is the time and day, but naturally, we don't have a name, so we can't really process that. But if you say you're not getting a call back, if you just get us close to the day and the time, and we will find out exactly what happened to your call, if it was dropped, if it was lost, if they had gotten it and just didn't respond. But now we have that availability to us and we can trace every phone call that comes into City Hall. So, I believe that's a good thing so that we can start clearing up all of the calls that people say they are not getting. I have one last thing. This is the letter from Neighbor Works that we were supposed to have received. So, it was brought to my attention that a copy of a letter that was sent to Neighbor Works Board of Directors dated March 5th was also copied to Scranton City Council. I finally received a copy of the letter on March 28th, and it remains unknown why City Council did not receive our copy until then. The letter in question was sent by attorney Brendan N. Fitzgerald from the law firm of Joyce Carmody &amp; Moran, PC, 9 North Main Street, Pittston, PA. The letter clearly states that it is attorney Fitzgerald's opinion that Todd Pousley is an employee of Neighbor Works and a City Council candidate, has a clear conflict of interest if elected to the position, and asks the board directly to clarify whether Mr. Pousley intends to resign from his position at Neighbor Works or whether he should be elected, or whether, if he should be elected to the City Council position. Now, the source of this letter is kind of confusing to me since, to best of my knowledge, attorney Fitzgerald does not live in the city of Scranton, therefore would not be eligible to even vote in the May 20th, '25 primary election for City Council. In addition, the attorney does not indicate in this letter that he's representing anybody, specifically a voter from the city of Scranton. Additionally, Joseph Joyce, a partner in the JCM law firm, is also the vice chair of the board member of Neighbor Works. To make it more interesting, attorney Larry Moran Jr., another partner in the law firm, to my knowledge is and has been very involved in Lackawanna County Democratic Committee and various leadership positions. So, like, one could view that this letter is an effort to intimidate the board of directors on Neighbor Works and to forcing Mr. Pousley to withdraw from the Democratic primary race for the city of Scranton. So, I would hope this clearly is not the case. Mr. Pousley has also served several years with the, as a member of the chairman of the Scranton City Planning Commission with great distinction, and not a single issue has ever happened, there's no questions or conflict of interest during this time. So, Mr. Volenberg, I would ask you at this time, send a letter to leadership of Neighbor Works requesting they do an internal investigation on the potential of a conflict of interest of Mr. Pousley, serving on City Council from their perspective, and if part of that investigation, if they should contact the State Ethics Commission also for an opinion. I will also instruct council solicitor Gilbryd, when he returns, to do the same, as well as the city of Scranton's ethics code, language, and then render an opinion to us. I do have that, all of that information in that letter available if anybody else would like it.
I will, thank you, sir.
5B for an induction in ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent easements in order to complete the Kaiser Valley Flood Protection Project, Group II of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code if required.
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
5C for an induction in ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the East Mountain Stormwater and Drainage Improvements Project, Group II of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code if required.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
5D for an induction, a resolution, resolution for plan revision for new land development located in the 500 block of Wyoming Avenue.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
5E for an induction, a resolution, resolution for plan revision for new land development, Weston Field Pool Complex located in the 900 block of Providence Road.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth Order 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 64, 2025, in ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Scranton and the borough of Music regarding coordination on zoning, planning, and code enforcement of 53 Glen Mara National Boulevard.
You have heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh Order 7A for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed to council number 62, 2025, accepting the proposal by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to purchase a right-of-way and a temporary construction agreement of a portion of city-owned property located on the easterly side of Mattis Avenue with tax MAC number as noted, for purposes of the with tax MAC number, as noted, for purposes of the Cedar Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into the necessary documents to convey the same.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally, lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, file to council number 63, 2025, amending file to council number 10 of 2024, establishing regulations governing excavations within the public right-of-way of the city of Scranton.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally, lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 192, 2025, ratifying execution of the purchase agreement with Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems for two refuse trucks.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally, lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 193, 2025, appointment of Paul W. Welby, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as alternate member number one of the zoning hearing board for the city of Scranton. Mr. Welby will replace Albert Young, whose term expired July 1, 2024. Mr. Welby's term will expire on July 1, 2028.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally, lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.